Much more variety of things that you can sell. You know, it's not just two or three main items. Each group wants something different and it really helps our sales, you know, to have that kind of a customer base. They should expect a lot of good produce. It's a diverse market. There's a little bit of everything. There's meats and cheeses and all that. And they should be well satisfied with what they find.
We specialize in summer lettuce. No one else can grow lettuce in the summer and we've found a way to do it. And heirloom tomatoes. Well, I've been coming here for 20 some years. I think I started the second year the market opened and haven't missed a market since then.
Coming up on County Report this week, we'll show you the sights and sounds of the Gaithersburg Labor Day Parade when County Report this week continues.
Register now for fall semester classes at Montgomery College. There are plenty of classes to choose from. Register in person at any of our three campuses or online anytime 24 hours a day. A grant from Wells Fargo will support MC's new entrepreneurship program for military vets. The grant makes it possible for 20 vets to develop their ideas for new businesses in the Kaufman Fast Track New Venture for Veteran Entrepreneur Program offered by MC's Workforce Development and Continuing Education Department. Sign up for Montgomery College Alert today. Receive college closing delay and emergency information via text message and email. The service also sends important information about Montgomery County weather and traffic
As a precautionary measure and in response to the spread of the dog flu in Montgomery County, the county's recreation department has canceled its popular pooch pool party scheduled for September 7th and 8th. While Animal Service Division officials confirmed there have been cases of the canine flu in the county, they believe that with precautions such as dog owners limiting contact with dogs other than their own, the spread of the virus can be minimized. County officials recommend that dog owners contact their veterinarians with any concerns or questions. The Centers for Disease Control and Protection indicates that this virus is not a threat to humans. The symptoms of this illness in dogs are cough, runny nose, and fever. However, a small proportion of dogs can develop severe disease. For more information about the virus, visit the CDC's website. Finally, the city of Gaithersburg celebrated Labor Day with its 75th annual parade. Thousands of people lined the streets for this popular event that features dance groups, antique cars, fire trucks, high school marching bands, equestrian units, community groups, politicians, well, you get the idea.
I love seeing the crowd come out and to know that we're the largest parade in Montgomery County.
This year's parade was dedicated to the law enforcement community and Kentland's resident Gil Price, who is chair of the Gaithersburg Police Foundation, served as the parade's grand marshal.
This was really very flattering and it's something that I'll never forget. It was interesting to me to see how many kids there were along the parade line and how people just kind of would applaud and say, "Thank you for being the grand marshal." And I wanted to thank them for just being here and their patriotic support of the parade.
Here's another fun fact. Organizers tell us that over the 75 years the city has hosted the Labor Day Parade, it has never rained out. As you can see, the sun was certainly shining down on the event this year. Well, that does it for this edition of County Report this week. Remember, we want to hear from you and we invite you to join the opinion forum at engage.mccombrycountymd.gov. We'd also like you to like us on Facebook. Join us again at this time every week for a look at what's going on inside Montgomery County. I'm Sonya Burke. Thank you for watching.
I call this meeting of Tacoma Park City Council order. Will Clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels-Cullen. Councilmember Grimes. Councilmember Mail. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, we have one update to the agenda this evening. Agenda item number six on the Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 13, Parking Meters, has been dropped from this evening's agenda. We're going to come back to it at a later point incorporating some additional items on that. And then in terms of future agenda, next Monday, September 16th, reminder that we're going to have a work session discussion with the city's legislative advocate. The following Monday, the 23rd, there's a presentation from the Brendel Group of, they're going to present the priority action plan and discuss the implementation strategy. And on Monday, September 30th, I believe we're not going to have a regular, it's the fifth Monday and we're not going to have a regular agenda. We're going to just meet with the city manager and talk about work plan and evaluation. And then a reminder that the following day, Tuesday, October 1st, is the nominating caucus at 7:30 in this room. And a further reminder that two weeks later, Monday, October 14th, we have a work session discussion of the Tacoma Metro Development. And there are a couple of things coming up, including some discussions about Washington Adventist Hospital as well. So there are a number of things coming up this fall. We will move next to public comments and this is the time when anybody who wishes to comment on any work session item on this evening's agenda or anything not on the agenda can do so if you have comments on the, and that would also be any comments on consent agenda items. So if you have any comments on any of the resolutions or first reading ordinances, if you can keep your comments until we get to those items. And if you can, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay, I think I lost this from here. All right. Hi, my name is Richard Levine and I live at the corner of Cedar and Philadelphia Avenue. And I've discussed this issue somewhat with Seth and somewhat just had a few remarks with the city manager, but I'd like to bring up a few points now to lead it to further discussion. And it is the issue of stationing a food truck in the first parking space on the west corner of the library lot siding Philadelphia Avenue and across from Cedar Avenue. Now, I very much support the idea of food trucks and see how they provide a good service for the staff at the municipal building, the users of the community center and the neighborhood. But I believe there's a better location for the food truck. Several spaces back in the library lot for a number of reasons, the first one being safety. The corner of Cedar and Old Philadelphia and Cedar and Philadelphia and Old Philadelphia is, I believe, one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. This is an intersection where traffic enters from five directions, from both ways on Philadelphia Avenue, from Cedar Avenue into and out of the library parking lot, and from Old Philadelphia Avenue. It's an intersection where many children cross to go to school, to the library, and many pedestrians cross to go to and from the metro. And very often cars take risks speeding across this uncertain intersection, either into or out of the library parking lot to the hazard particularly of pedestrians, but also vehicles. And the traffic hazard is at its worst right where the food truck would be stationed and it would be right at this juncture where people would be lining up and milling around for food as traffic is trying to go into and out of this lot. It's an accident, in my opinion, waiting to happen and many have, as I can testify, as I've lived directly at this intersection for almost 30 years. However, once cars enter the library parking lot, most vehicles, but not all, recognize they're in an area with heavy pedestrian traffic, but this occurs once they proceeded further into the parking lot. And this is where I would propose the food truck should be stationed. This solution, in my opinion, is to move the food truck to one of the numerous spaces further back in the library lot. Orange fencing or something of that order could then be erected to separate those waiting for and getting food from the moving traffic. I think the issue of where it would be safest to station a food truck on a heavily used roadway through a parking lot is a topic that I will look forward to discussing with council members and city staff. I'm sure there are other measures that could be proposed to enhance safety for food truck patrons, such as installing speed bumps or other barriers in the parking lot to separate food truck customers from the traffic. On the personal and community side, the truck would be parked right along Philadelphia Avenue. If it's not moved back some space, it would be visible from a roadway that passes through an historic district and on the gateway road through our community. I can personally see this space from the windows of my home and would not want to be viewing a food truck. I've seen many food trucks and they all look like unattractive trailers, no matter how interesting the food. I further have concern that odors from the food truck will be wafting into my house, as will noise generated by the food trucks, which I understand must continuously operate their generators. And I appreciate the council and staff's efforts to enhance our community with amenities such as food trucks, but I will look forward to discussing with council and staff how to address safety and community concerns in the most propitious manner. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you. My name is Michael Lutske. I live at 1014 Elm Avenue. Been a resident of Tacoma Park since 1997. Many of you know about the construction on New Hampshire and Sligo that's caused the closure of Sligo Creek and that's the reason that I'm speaking today. I know Tim has done a lot of great work for the residents of our neighborhood, but as you know, this construction started over the summer and we have seen a pretty strong increase in traffic on our little 25-foot wide street, a street where most of the residents don't have off-street parking. It makes the street even narrower, a street that doesn't have complete sidewalks all the way to the bus stop. And so you have about 40 third grade and under and maybe 25 third grade and older walking to bus stops without sidewalks. And Tim can tell you the numbers of cars that are going through our street now. And that was over the summer. Since school started and everyone's back at work, that number certainly has increased. And what's happening is really untenable, unsafe, and we've tried to call the police about it. We have buses that can't pass each other on the street, which backs up cars 30 deep all the way back to the intersections with stop signs where people are running the stop sign because the car in front of them wants to turn, but they want to go straight, nearly hitting children. We've had property damage, cars and fences. We have honking and arguing amongst drivers early in the morning and late in the afternoon, aside from just the general nuisance of music blaring and more traffic. And so that's the problem and I'm sure that you've heard of it before and are grateful that everyone has taken such a strong interest in it. But I'd like to try and find a solution. I mean, one of the easy ones that we'd like to get some help with is maybe there's an opportunity for a little police presence in the morning and afternoons when the buses are dropping kids off. Again, today, because the sidewalk construction started on our stretch of Elm, the construction crews managed to close off part of the street diverting traffic through a private alley. That's not tenable because that's barely one car through and it's private property. The bus driver today had to get out of his bus and move the barrier so that he could get the bus through to drop the kids off at the bus stop. So a police presence is something that we'd like to ask for some help with. And the other one is a little more involved, but it's really important to me because since this construction started, there's absolutely nothing that's being done on Sligo Creek that requires it to be closed. I understand that the light had to be removed so that the bridge repair could get done, but there is no reason why people can't make a right-hand turn on Sligo coming from the north and there's no reason why people coming from the south can't go to the next intersection which has a left-hand turn lane and a light to make a U-turn and make their right turn on Sligo Creek. I'm not as familiar as many of you with all of the stages of construction, but every time I'm down there inspecting that site, there's nothing parked there, there's no storage there. It's simply a barricade. And I would like to hope that maybe there's an opportunity for some help either with you all and maybe some state counterparts to reopen the discussion about whether or not that really is a necessary inconvenience. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for your comments and I'm sure we'll have some further discussions on this. Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple, 28th Avenue, Maple Avenue. And I'd like to introduce myself. Everybody knows I'm the peace delegate, working for peace for you guys. And I'd like to remind you people that there's only 57 days before voting. And that's also to remind you 16 and 17-year-olds now, you've got the right to vote here in Tacoma Park. So please, don't forget to show up and vote. I'd also like to see more participation in these meetings. I'd like to see maybe schools send their kids out, maybe on studying government, send them out to the city council meetings for a while. I think they'd enjoy it. They'd find it pretty interesting in how their city is run. And then they'd be able to pick the candidate they want. And I really think, you know, that we have to get people down to vote. Also, I'd like to tell everybody, we had a wonderful time at that Folk Festival. That Folk Festival was a ruler. The music was great. The people were great. A lot of people came up to me and asked about the peace sign, that they'd like to be like me when they grow up. So also, it's an opportunity to set a good role model for the children and to get people involved. I'd like to see that. But also, October, on the first Sunday of October, we're having the Street Festival, don't forget, up there in Old Town Alexandria, Carol and Laurel Street where we have, they can have a lot of music down by the church tower. I mean, the church and the clock tower. We're going to have a big festival down there. So if you enjoyed the festival, come on down and have another festival. Tacoma Park really knows how to put on a good show. Don't forget, be proud of your city. Take part in your city and be active for your city because this is an activist city and we can't forget that. And we have to really work hard if we want to keep it that way. We also got to remember too that a good way to protest the cutbacks on our voting and our rights to vote, destroying the Voting Rights Act, a good way to protest that is get out there and vote. Get out there and vote. Get out there and vote. I think we can do it. So remember, 57 more days before we vote in Tacoma Park, everybody. And also, you 16 and 17-year-olds, you've got the right. Please use it. Don't lose it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that my wife and I attended the Folk Festival yesterday and once again it was a great event. I really appreciate the hard work that all the organizers put in and all the volunteers to organize that event. The other thing I wanted to ask for tonight, while we were on recess through August, there was some discussion in, I believe it was New York City, about a police policy, a stop-and-frisk policy. And there was some discussion about the potential bias that might be used in that. And I know that Tacoma Park Police have a, do some similar types of function. And so I just would like to get some information on that, maybe over the last two years of breakdown of demographics, age, gender, race, ethnicity, of those that we are stopping and recording. Thank you.
I'll make a couple of comments. I as well enjoyed the Folk Festival. I had any number of people ask me if the crowd was smaller than previous years. I have no way of judging. It's kind of hard to tell whether it's the same people walking around or whether it's different people walking around. But I do know that a number of people made that observation. I have no idea whether it's the case, but it was a very good festival. A reminder to folks that there are continuing discussions both at the state level and at the county level about tax duplication. And a reminder again to my colleagues that there are meetings scheduled for this Thursday night, the 12th, in Rockville, and the following Thursday night in Poolsville. Both those meetings are chapter, are meetings of the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter, and they're going to be very important meetings as far as tax duplication. The county is looking to change the law and it would not be to our benefit. And there are various discussions at the state level as well. And so all of that is going to be going forth this fall leading up toward the first of the year. I did want to let people know that I was at an event in Baltimore last week on Wednesday. It was a press announcement by the governor that the state is adding $3 million to the partnership funding various green initiatives, and that was in concert with the federal EPA and the Chesapeake Bay Trust. I then participated in a roundtable discussion with the executive director of the Chesapeake Bay Trust, the new secretary of EPA, Gina McCarthy, the District Three Administrator, Sean Garvin, and two Maryland secretaries, the Secretary of the Environment and the Secretary of Department of Natural Resources. And I had the opportunity to thank the executive director of the Chesapeake Bay Trust for the grant that they gave us, excuse me, which helped provide the money for planning for the Flower Avenue Green Street Project, which then enabled us to have the 30% drawings so that we could be eligible for the funding through the Council of Governments from the federal government, from the Transportation Alternatives Program. So I made that connection to point out how very important that funding was and also to make the case that Tacoma Park had additional needs and would welcome the opportunity to get additional grant funds. So that was a time well worth attending and having the conversations with those people. Also wanted to remind folks that next Sunday, September 15th, at 4 o'clock, is the Lee Jordan rededication, the field at the middle school, and that ceremony is going to be again at 4 o'clock on Sunday. And there's the opportunity for everybody to attend that and then a community, kind of a picnic type of event after that. And that's being coordinated by the Recreation Department and a number of other folks. And then also a reminder that the following weekend, Saturday, the 21st, the Tacoma Foundation is having one of their major fundraising events, and that is Beer Fest at the Katie Lee Mansion, and that's from 4 to 8. And the word is that tickets may be limited and there may be a sellout before the event. So if people are interested, they should get their tickets beforehand. And next, I will go to Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. So I will add only about the Beer Fest, I will add only that you can go to tacomafoundation.org online. You can buy tickets online and find out information about stores where you can buy tickets. My understanding from one of the Tacoma Foundation board members, Bob Sheldon, is that there are up to 17 breweries and they're arranging lots of food, including, Bob Sheldon was very happy to say, from our incoming restaurant, Tacoma Republic. I also very much enjoyed going to the Folk Festival. It was a great opportunity to hear music, of course. I will call out some of the kids I heard, Max Kitner, for instance, and the person he performed with, Lila, and then also Anna Savage, who lives on the corner here. And then, of course, adult musicians were good, too. I had some interesting conversations, including with Bruce Baker of Cheer, catching up on Cheer's implementation of some of the Health Enterprise Zone initiatives toward the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads area. I know that my colleague Jared Smith has been working with Bruce on, and it all sounded very good. I also had the opportunity to attend a meeting over the weekend and hear a little bit more than I knew before about a program that Jared Smith is also involved in, along with other community members, Sharon Oliver and Jacquet Frazier, who really deserve our thanks, along with Terrell North for the Lunch and Learn Program, for the library book programs that they're doing at the Essex House. And I know they are looking for support to expand those programs and I would hope that we'll be able to lend them whatever support that we can. I attended this morning here a meeting of the Transportation and Environment Committee of the Montgomery County Council. The committee is chaired by Roger Berliner and includes two at-large council members, Hans Römer and Nancy Florin. They were considering county action on pesticides at the request of council member George Leventhal, who chairs the county council's Health and Human Services Committee, inspired by Tacoma Park Safe Grow Zone ordinance. So I had the opportunity to testify on a panel alongside the two Tacoma Park Safe Grow Zone proponents, the people who pushed us forward, Julie Tadio and Catherine Cummings, and then also Nicole Rents, who was present at one of our council meetings along with her boss, Washington DC Council Member Mary Che. I would call the reception that the committee gave to the idea of county council action on pesticides. The presence of industry figures who were on a panel who were somewhat dismissive of Folk Festival, and I understand that this is going to be her last year running it. I would also like to mention on October 27th, I am sponsoring, in Congress, Washington Adventist Hospital, a health fair at Essex House. It will be open to the entire city. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels-Cullen.
Thank you, Mayor. I got one upped here a whole bunch of times, but it never hurts to hear it again. First, I have to give myself a gold star because I couldn't figure out a way to get out of the council meeting tonight. It is the opening game of the Washington DC season and we are playing Philadelphia. So I get a little gold star, not a big one, but a little one. Great gobs of gold stars, the Colleen, and our multitude of volunteers for a great Folk Festival yesterday. So many people and music and activities. I haven't got the chance to hand out information and chat with all kinds of people and. With council members as volunteers. It was really great fun. Here's save the dates for September, touching on October with a smattering of more gold stars. We're really in a full swing of things with back to school and soccer rolling along. We Are Tacoma, made in Tacoma Park, featuring artists from our very own Azalea City. Hats off to huge gold and huge gold stars, Sarah Danes and her staff, for always having a huge and spectacular We Are Tacoma program. I got one upped here a whole bunch of times, but it never hurts to hear it again. First, I have to give myself a gold star because I couldn't figure out a way to get out of the council meeting tonight. It is the opening game of the Washington DC season, and we are playing Philadelphia. So I get a little gold star, not a big one, but a little one. Great gobs of gold stars to Colleen and our multitude of volunteers for a great Folk Festival yesterday. So many people and music activities. I haven't got the chance to hand out information and chat with all kinds of people and It was really great fun. Here's save the dates for September, touching on October with a smattering of more gold stars. We're really in a full swing of things with back-to-school and soccer rolling along. We Are Tacoma, Made in Tacoma Park, featuring artists from our very own Azalea City. Hats off to huge gold and huge gold stars to Sarah Danes and her staff for always having a huge and spectacular We Are Tacoma program. The programs are always educational, usually free, and many are kid-friendly. Pick up the program at the front desk. It goes, I think, into the end of December, and then there'll be another one. But on the 12th, which is Thursday, they're opening the Made in Tacoma series, and Ward Three's very own John Guernsey is showing his work. I think he's still in Ward Three. He has been in Ward Three. So there you go. Always worth coming to anything We Are Tacoma. 9:15, two exciting activities on this date. The mayor's already mentioned one of them, but the other one is in the morning. It's the apple pie contest. I call it the pie-eating contest. I think it's the pie-judging contest. Yum. I get to be a judge with Mayor, Council, and Councilmember Schultz. More gold stars to Laura Barclay and Patty Baker for putting OTBA on the map and establishing some really exciting partnerships and programs. They're expecting, last year there were 25 pies, they're expecting twice as many this year, so they're probably going to have to divide it in half. That's a lot of pie to judge, but very tasty.
All you can eat?
All you can eat. No, you can only just taste. You're only allowed to taste. At 4:00 PM, that's at 11:00 in Old Town. At 4:00 PM, the rededication of Lee Jordan Field. That's the field you all enjoy the fireworks from, and better yet, get to play soccer and baseball and almost anything else. We have so many new residents who have never had the pleasure of experiencing Lee Jordan, and he was instrumental in establishing an integrated boys' and girls' club. And I want to underline "and girls" because in those years, there were no "and girls." It was only a boys' club. So it got to be "and girls." Lee Jordan made a huge impact on our city. Probably as important as any of our mayors, sorry, Mayor Williams. Remember, all of this was happening before, during, and right after Brown versus the Board of Education. It was a heavy and hectic time for everybody. So Lee Jordan is a Tacoma Park resident. He probably was born in the city, lived on Geneva or Ritchie all his life, Ritchie? All his life, and gave everything back to the residents. The 28th of September, you all forgot this one. The 5th Annual Play Day at the middle school from 10:00 to 2:00, starting with the balloon game led by yours truly. More gold stars to Pat Rombach, who's Tacoma Park's very own play lady and has put us on the map and made us a playful city USA. 10:01, Nominating Caucus, everybody's talked about it. It's that moment where you can bring your kids and let them take a taste of what grassroots government is really about. It's really grassroots government at its very best. So give them an educational experience, or just bring yourself. It's very educational. And 10:02, one of my favorite agencies, the State Highway Administration. They're having a little open house or informal meeting at the middle school from 6:00 to 7:30 about the bridge they're going to tear down on Carroll Avenue in 2015. This was the document we got in the mail. You all should have gotten this. They send them to everybody. All the red marks are where I want to discuss. We can make a few changes, make it a little bit easier on our citizenry. So that one's going to just be a walk-in. Now, more gold stars to our city manager. Not everybody knows that Brian Kenner ran in the charity-driven, and I don't even know the name, Brian. I should know the name.
Nation's triathlon.
All right. Triathlon, yesterday showed up at our Folk Festival. I have a feeling he whipped out of here and went to Adam's Morgan Day. I'm not sure. No, didn't get to Adam's Morgan Day. Okay. But wow, who knew he was a triathlon man? That is pretty powerful stuff. Gold stars to our very own Merrill Lefner for being reappointed as poet laureate of Tacoma Park and reading in the Library of Congress. I'm not sure when he's reading and what he's reading, but it's going to be in the very near future. He and his wife Anne are still in Vermont. Will be back here later on this week, but he's reading at the Library of Congress. Many of you may know that he's responsible for the fabulous framed poetry you see along the many walks around the city. He's brought poetry back into our consciousness, along with his able-bodied sidekick, Claire Garman, who actually makes the frames and posts the work, pounds the stakes and makes sure everything looks good, and his Michelle Morgan, who coordinates with Montgomery College students with the artwork. So it's a three-prong job, and it's beautifully done, and it just enhances our great city. So that's it for my side of the mountain. Thank goodness, says Mayor Williams.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, I wanted to thank you for coming out and speaking to us about Elm Avenue traffic problems. The problems with the bus and the sidewalk construction are new, and I'm assuming the city manager would follow up, particularly around that detour issue, because that sounds like not a good situation. And I don't believe there was any notice to the community about that, but that may have been just a one-time thing. Otherwise, I'm very appreciative of all the work the city staff have put into this area. I want to thank city staff as well for their work on the Jackson Avenue sidewalk and new bioretention areas. That project is very close to being completed, three new areas to collect and filter water running down this very steep street, a very wide sidewalk which is frequently used, including, I would say, by a resident who lives at the bottom of the hill off Sligo Creek Parkway who is wheelchair-bound. So that individual uses the sidewalk to get from a bus stop on 410, goes all the way down Jackson to get to their apartment. So the sidewalk's seen immediate use, not just by all the other runners and joggers and strollers, but also by someone who really needed it. So I thank the city staff for their work there. I'm going to follow up with our Public Works Director, Dale Braithwaite, because when I look at the bioretention places that have been done throughout the city, I'm surprised to see that some of them look like they're sort of sloped uphill away from the drains. So I'm just not understanding the design aspects that look like they would make water go sort of the wrong way. But I just wanted to raise that to my colleagues' attention, because we want them to work appropriately. And then I wanted to follow up. Last week, I mentioned to the council and also the city manager my request for clarification about whether residents on Flower Avenue and in the Long Branch-Sligo neighborhood need to come back to the city council to talk about traffic calming at the intersection of Jackson and Flower, or whether we're ready to move forward with some action. What they had specifically requested was raised crosswalks or raised intersection at that spot. They had raised other ideas as well. But if we need another public meeting, I'd love to get that scheduled. If not, it would be great to establish a timeline for acting on their request. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Tomorrow night, Tuesday night, the New Hampshire Garden Civic Association is having its quarterly meeting. Normally, this meeting is conducted at the city's rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, but this time Holly Robertson is inviting the community to come to her backyard at 7402 Glen Side. Holly is the president. And the meeting starts, I guess, at 7:00. And so I think Diana Cohn, President of the Historic Tacoma, is going to be attending that meeting and giving a brief presentation on the work that Historic Tacoma is interested in doing in that side of the city, the Ward Six area, and be looking for leads and information from people that can help benefit the historic information that the Historic Tacoma has with regard to that part of the city of Tacoma Park. One of the things, I attended the Folks Festival, and I was there early at the beginning, about 10:00, and still they were setting up. But one of the things that always is so pleasurable is that I don't know of any other event on an annual basis that is conducted in the city that attracts such an incredible diversity of types of people to come, more so than the Street Festival, more so, of course, than the July Fourth Parade, and anything else that I can think of. And it is a sheer delight just to see all the colors and nationalities and ethnicities, which is supported by the tremendous variety of music that is so well-performed. Every year, the festival goes like clockwork, and it has done so. It was one of the things that attracted me to live in this city 27 years ago, because we happened to visit Tacoma Park for the very first time the day the festival was being held. My wife said, "We've got to live here." And that was it. And so it goes, and I really encourage people to come to it. It's just loads and loads of fun, something really, I mean, you can honestly say there's something there for everybody. I wanted to talk about one other thing, and that is that last week, we had a presentation from city staff on the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan, particularly a feasibility study that had been completed under the aegis of the Greater Washington Council of Governments to sort of test the feasibility of the concept. New Hampshire Avenue touches on Wards Three, Two, and Six, and many of us use it to get to work and just to go places, and sometimes even. The point is very malleable and changeable. If implemented as shown right now, it would have an impact on lots of properties. But the important point that I want to stress here is that it is quite subject to change and influence and input from residents and property owners, and I would encourage you to look at it on the newav.com. That's literally the newav.com website. It'll be the first thing that comes up. Learn a little bit about it, and then offer opinions to the city, offer ideas, offer concerns, because all of that is very valuable, and the city staff is going to be seeking input from residents and property owners, of course. The other thing I want to stress about this is to understand is that the Montgomery County Planning Board is also, at the same time, looking at an alternative way for the future of New Hampshire Avenue, and that's to see the New Hampshire Avenue become a bus rapid transit route. And as currently conceived, that would involve coordinating off the two center lanes of New Hampshire Avenue for high-speed buses to kind of roll through the city with stops up at University Boulevard, at the New Transit Center, at Ethan Allen Avenue, and again down at the DC Line. So it really wouldn't much serve residents of Tacoma Park. It would be primarily for people who live in the outer suburbs to get downtown to work a little more quickly. My personal opinion is I think it would be a terrible mistake for it to be developed the way that the county seems to be thinking about it, and would run pretty much totally diametrically opposed to the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan, which the Montgomery County Planning Board has already endorsed. So one has to wonder what's up. And I think this is a place and a time when citizen input could be extremely valuable to make sure that New Hampshire Avenue becomes a, I like to use the term, think of it as a zipper, that if the concept planned is properly developed over the years, it'll unite both sides of the street and make it much more of a community street, as opposed to a bus rapid transit place, which will probably be a divider and make it very difficult for people to see New Hampshire Avenue as anything other than kind of a miniature Berlin Wall. I may be exaggerating in some people's opinion, but that's my point of view and how I see it right now. So this is all something that's long-range, but it's important to get started early, because if you don't, then everybody shows up and says, "Hey, nobody told me about this." Well, you're being told about it now, and you will continue to get information from the city gradually over time. It's not a hurry-up thing. It's very long-range. It's visionary, but it's important that people know about it. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for council comment. Does the city manager have comments?
Yes, thank you. Just a few follow-up items. I know, Mayor, thank you for tabling the discussion about some of the parking code analysis. Staff is going to continue to work on putting together some additional information around pay stations and pay-by-phone from the conversation that we had last week, so we hope to have that within the next few weeks for council to consider, not only the code language, but also some of the information on some of the other analysis that we've been putting together. Also, I know that there were a few questions that I'd gotten before the council meeting this evening about dog parks as it relates to some of the open space items. I'm hopeful that the information that we conveyed during the open space discussion provides some answers to that. I just want to reinforce that the city has not made a decision on a location yet for where that dog park could be potentially located. Again, we don't have any, it was not identified as a specific line item fiscal year 14, so right now, we're continuing to just go through the feasibility steps in terms of looking at some of the alternatives, and we'll talk more about that in the open space discussion. I note for Councilmember Mail, I think we've got an answer on the Jackson and Florida Avenue discussion, which I see our Public Works Director, and so maybe afterwards or during the break, we can talk a little bit more about that and some of the other items that you had, just to make sure that you get some follow-up on that. And I know from the previous council conversation that we also have some information that we want to provide to council about the New Hampshire Avenue multway, some of the questions about tax revenues and so forth, and so we'll be able to get that hopefully out to you all fairly soon. And then finally, you will probably be seeing some information, as the mayor mentioned, there's a conversation with some other municipalities around tax duplication. Our deputy city manager, Suzanne Ludlow, has done a fantastic job of putting together some analysis, and so I think you'll see that tomorrow, just in terms of giving council members an opportunity to look at some of the issues that are in the most recently produced Office of Legislative Oversight.
Oversight.
Thank you. OLL report, just for you all to consider. Again, we will have city staff in addition to some council members that will be
Follow-up question?
Yes.
Have we gotten applicants in for the committee, the Safe Roadways Committee? And if so, are we at a point where we could make appointments soon, or?
I think you may be, and I'll be sending them this week. I think we have six.
Okay.
I think there are six. I think there are six.
And there are seven spaces created on the committee, or nine?
It's, I think it, it's up to 11, I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'd have to double-check.
I have another constituent who's thinking of it. Let me just close that. I think it'd be good to move forward if, when we can. Go ahead.
Okay. So that's it for questions for the city manager. We will move forward to the regular meeting agenda, and the first item is a consent agenda, and it's got eight items, and it consists of various contracts and appointments. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
And I just, I had earlier requested to take one item off the consent agenda, the compressor?
Okay, so it will be the agenda, it'll be the consent agenda minus item F.
Second.
Okay, so that's moved by council member Schultz, seconded by council member Siemens. All, let's see, that's a, there's single reading ordinances in there, so we'll need a roll call vote. Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Janus Cohen.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Aye. That passes unanimously. We will now take up consent agenda item number F, and that's the single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a large air compressor. Councilmember Mail.
So my question was just, and I raised this by email, but wanted to repeat it for the public. If we're doing an energy audit for the building, I'm assuming a compressor is something that uses a significant amount of energy. It's just something that runs probably near continuously as part of the building's air conditioning and heating process. No, it's a small use, it's a small piece of our energy use?
The air compressor is used in the mechanic shop as a powering tool for air equipment. It's used only when they've got, you know, hand, you know, those kind of
Got it.
compressor-powered tools that require that kind of air that produces the, you know, that the air compressor produces. It's a very old piece of equipment. Anything produced now will be much more efficient. It's a gas-powered equipment, natural gas-powered equipment, so it's not electric.
Great. Thank you. Question answered. Please satisfied.
Okay. Any other information about that one desired? Would somebody like to move the single reading ordinance?
It's all moved.
Moved by council member Mail, seconded by council member Schultz. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, it's a single reading ordinance.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes.
Yes.
Councilmember Janus Cohen.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Aye. That passes unanimously as well. We will now move to the first reading ordinance awarding a contract for an energy audit for the Community Center and Hefner Park. Did staff want to say anything about this one?
This is the versions that come out of the audit. You may recall, we passed two resolutions as part of the Smart Energy Communities Program. One was to reduce electricity use in city facilities by 15% in five years, and the other was to make sure we're providing 20% of our electricity use through renewable onsite generation. So this will be a step towards developing our 15% reduction plan.
Okay. Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
It's all moved.
Second?
Moved by council member Mail, seconded by council member Siemens. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. Ms. Braithwaite, I just had a question about whether, as part of the Brendel Group process, we've already done any calculation of energy use by this building? Has the city provided data to Brendel as part of their work?
Yeah, the greenhouse gas emissions inventory that they did included community sector as well as a government sector. So all the greenhouse gas emissions relative to city facilities has been calculated and documented. We keep fairly extensive records of our different types of energy use since 1994, so we have a pretty, pretty good database.
If that's something that could be a fairly concise document that you could provide as either backgrounds, you know, directly to me, or as part of a future council agenda, it would be good to just get that on the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
And Ms. Braithwaite, you say that we never did a comprehensive energy audit, but my sense is that there have been a number of evaluations of energy use in, particularly in this building, with various changes in technology and various installations going on over a period of time, approximately the last 20 years. Is that
Yeah. My recollection, the first round of things was in the mid-'90s, when we brought a lighting firm in to review lighting upgrades. Of course, a lot of that was changed with the construction, so all, you know, most of the lighting in the building's been changed since that mid-'90s upgrade.
That was all about T8s?
Yes, right. We went from T8s to D12s, and, you know, got rid of a lot of the incandescent lights in the city. Also went to the high-pressure sodium lights for exterior use. So that was really a lighting contractor's effort. It was driven largely by Pepco rebates at the time. They had specific programs that they, you know, that we participated with and got rebates back based on both our chiller, our original air conditioner that was put in in the mid-'90s, as well as the lighting upgrades for the city. So they were very focused audits, not comprehensive, building-wide, building envelope, energy use. I think that, you know, the changes in lighting has really been a rapid growth, so I think the efficient lighting that we put in in 2007 is likely already to be shown to be outdated by some of the new technology that's coming in with the LEDs. So we assume that there'll be a lot of those types of things identified in the building.
And it'll have some sense of what the payback might be, because you can always go to more efficient, but what's the cost?
Yeah, there'll be a rate of return evaluation, as well as an energy reduction, cost savings. We're not looking specifically to pay-for-performance type of program where you pay for the upgrades based on the savings you have in the, in the energy loss, but, you know, that'll be some of the things that the contractor will be making report on once they do the evaluation.
Okay, that's helpful. Thanks. Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, Ms. Braithwaite, could you kind of give us an idea of the scope of this contract? In other words, what sort of things is this energy audit going to be focusing on?
Well, we've asked them to look at both the Community Center and Hefner Park. They'll largely be doing similar things, though on a much different scale for those two buildings, given the different size and the different energy use. They do a couple of things. One is, one is they look at a history of our energy bills and energy use, so they'll be tracking energy use for the past few years and just comparing it to, you know, facility averages and best practices that a building like ours should, you know, in this type of setting should be using. So they'll be comparing it with norms. And then they'll actually walk through the building and take a look at a variety of different aspects, and look at all of our large equipment, look at all of our systems. We've already identified, just based on knowing the building, the issues that we're concerned about. We have a lot of uneven heating and cooling. We have humidity issues in the building, and we have insufficient digital controls on some of our heating and air conditioning equipment, so we can't maximize efficiency very well by, you know, being able to easily adjust temperatures based on different uses and conditions. So that's some of the things they'll be looking at. It'll be building envelope-type insulation stuff, lighting, equipment, and HVAC equipment will be a large part of that, and, you know, and then the energy use.
Well, one, one idea is that it's oft been said that the atrium in this, in our new building is, you know, is not an energy-efficient use of space, obviously, because you get a lot of heat rising up that you don't, may not want to lose, and stuff like that, and it's probably difficult to regulate that, that kind of vertical space. Is that the sort of thing that they might be commenting?
I doubt that they'll be getting into any kind of structural recommendations, so basically be looking at existing structure, existing use, and existing equipment.
Okay.
The city does have an architect looking at a partial close-in or a full closure of the atrium based on a request in last fiscal year's budget. So we will be getting a structural report back sometime in October on that. I don't know that that'll include an analysis of energy pluses or minuses relative to closing it in. It'll no doubt include some things, because if you're closing off a space that once was opened, you then have to, you know, capture air and, you know, circulate it in a way that you hadn't before.
Sure.
But we haven't gotten that yet.
Okay.
But they won't be looking at structural
Okay.
structural issues, per se, unless they find something glaring, you know, like there's, you know, an opening in a wall that should be filled in or whatever.
Thank you.
And I'll just add on that last point that you were talking about with the, with a tall space and conditioning the air in that space. I always had questions about that in residential applications and asked questions of my HVAC contractor a decade or two ago, and their simple answer was, once you, once the space, once the heat rises in the space, and you basically get what they call a head up there, and that kind of just stays the same, and you condition the space below it, and at that point, you've got a fairly efficient system. You're not dealing with trying to condition that space up there.
Okay.
Any public comments on this first reading ordinance? Seeing none, will clerk please call a roll? Oh, it's not a first reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. We will go to agenda item number three, and this is a resolution approving the program Open Space Annual Program. And I just want to remind folks, as was pointed out a little bit earlier by the city manager, that what we're doing here is talking about what's going to be on our designated annual program, and that part of the discussion will be development of a new dog park. And the point is to, if we want to add that, and it's listed in the annual program, that can make it so that we can use program open space funds for that. And you can, you don't have to do that, and it doesn't really get at many of the particulars of the potential dog park. So that the context of this is that we're talking about it as adding it to the program Open Space Annual Program. So just if we keep that in mind as we have these discussions, that would be very helpful. So it looks like the deputy city manager wants to introduce this item.
Yes, please. Every year, the council adopts an annual program for program open space. These are state funds that are allocated to municipalities and others for acquisition or development of parkland, and sometimes for recreation activities. These monies come in widely varying amounts each year, completely unpredictable. This year, the amount that we were allocated is $46,338. What that brings our total from previous years to currently a balance of $438,196. Of those amounts, some will be spent to pay for the work that is just being completed on Lee Jordan Field, and including the new sign and the materials for the dedication next weekend. That's only about $30,000 or so. But more significant amounts have been allocated in this past year for the Colby Avenue tot lot renovation and Sligo Mill Overlook Park renovation. Both of these still need to be designed, and then in the following year, they would need, the work would need to be constructed. And we likely spend a good portion of the amount of the funds that are there on those two parks. One of the things that happens with the annual program is that things need to be on the annual program for us to, if we decide to go forward with a park plan. Once it gets filed with first the county and then with the state, if we move forward with an application for a project, the state checks to make sure it's on the annual program. Then there's quite a lot of application data that goes into the application, including, you know, is the proposal on the city's master plan? Is it something that, you know, meets the criteria for park development or acquisition? And then it goes forward for approval at the state. Eventually, the city can be, can receive 75% of the project cost from the program open space funds, if there are enough funds for that. The information that we have here is that the same projects are put forward on the city's annual program for FY 2014, the Lee Jordan Sprinkler replacement, the Colby Park renovation, the Sligo Mill Overlook Park development. We've also suggested that you may wish to add dog park development as something on the annual program. This allows us to evaluate the various locations that have been proposed, and perhaps other locations for a dog park. And if there are expenditures made for that, it allows us to get a letter of concurrence, which allows us to eventually get 75% of those funds back that we may spend on it. If we do not have it on this annual program, we're not allowed to ask for reimbursement for the funds that are spent. I want to talk just a moment about the information that was presented on dog parks in the package. I understand that it upset a number of people, and I apologize for that, for that impression. Basically, we have kind of been excited as staff about the proposals for looking forward to some location for a dog park. We've investigated three of the, the proposals that were, the different sites that were proposed by Joe Edgell, when he came here earlier to make a presentation on behalf of the group Tacoma Dogs. And one or more of the sites may be appropriate. They need to have more study, and that's something that, it's not in our work program, but it is something that we see as a possibility to begin in this current year, although real expenditure of funds would have to wait for a future year. And I just wanted to indicate that there's not an estimate for what a dog park would include. There's widely varying cost estimates depending on what is proposed, and there's a lot of discussion yet to come. But we did want to make sure that if we are doing some facility planning that requires some expenditure of funds, that we have an opportunity to recoup most of those funds. Happy to answer it. Any questions you may have?
And let me, let me just say that I'll take some responsibility for some of the information being not quite maybe what everybody thought it was going to be. When staff talked to me about wanting to include the program open space item and with potential for dog park information, and they shared with me some of the things that they had investigated and found, I said, "I thought it would be interesting and exciting for the dog park proponents and people who are interested in that to hear some of that information now, to know that the city is working on that," and just to kind of keep the excitement level up. And that may have contributed to adding some additional information into the packet that maybe got people a little excited.
And I apologize, because we didn't make it out, we didn't do an outreach to the Tacoma Dog staff, to members, and we should have done that. One of the things that I do want to kind of mention, and there is some reference in here, is that we, in investigating one of the sites that was proposed, which is off the end of the Darwin Avenue parking lot, when we kind of looked at it, it does overlap with a large parcel that the city owns, which is part of Hefner Park, which is just an overgrown area of invasives that we haven't done anything with for a long time. And so that is something that I wanted to mention, that it is city-owned property for the bulk of that site. And it's something to look at.
Okay. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. This is a really important program, because it's one of our best sources of funding for maintenance and new, new facilities, as this deputy city manager indicated, but also for land acquisition. Our strategic plan, our city strategic plan, talks about the acreage of park lands in the city. My belief is that that has not changed significantly in, in many years. This is my fourth time talking about trying to expand park space in the city since being on council. And this discussion about this resolution is really the only chance we ever have where an agenda item comes up that is about the purpose and the scope and the future of our open space preservation, management efforts. I believe in two years that, you know, this and last year's resolution are the only times we actually get to discuss it. Some of the ideas that have come up before from myself, members of the public, I think other members of council have spoken about it. other members of council have spoken about it, are, for example, the north end, northwest end of the McLaughlin School property, which is wooded, has springs. We heard from some member of the public when there was concern about development of that site, about frogs and amphibians, wildlife populations on that site. That's a great example of an open space that's valued by the community that has no protection at present. Another site is the intersection of Jackson Avenue and 410, which may or may not be appropriate to use as open space in case the city would ever want to turn it into non-open space in the future, since it's in a residential area. But it's in, it's no more in a residential area than some of the parks right across the street are, here are. It would be a great place to have a gateway park into the city. And I just note that, that those opportunities for acquisition, for even exploring acquisition or for easements, there are many places in the city where there's a lot that, that has, that is zoned for two houses, but doesn't have two houses worth of development on it. Or we could use things like easements to, to protect that development if it's somehow important, if it protects water quality or maintains, you know, current infiltration capacity, reduces future impervious surfaces. So, you know, it's my belief that we would be, it would be, I would, I would have preferred to have something on this, on this resolution, creating space for acquisition opportunities, for pursuing acquisition opportunities. And I believe the city staff, the deputy city manager may have some information on that Jackson 410 site as well. But just in general, I think we should be holding the door open for that. Finally, the other issue, sorry, two more things. In terms of the Tot Lot, I know there's been some concern about whether that space between the community garden, I'm Tot Lot, did I say Tot Playground, whatever it's called, can be configured for a playground for young children as well as the community gardens. And so whenever we get closer to a decision on that, on that project, we'll probably need some more discussion on that. Oh, shoot, now I've forgotten my final issue.
I'd like to-
Oh, let me just, last thing, I did remember it, and I'll forget it again, is just, you know, in terms of, because I work on national environmental policy, the fund, the federal fund that provides much of this money that goes to the states is, you know, sort of one of the, the most lauded uses, conservation funds available, President Obama during his campaign, and subsequently later, you know, fully funded this land and water conservation fund. And its perception is that it's very much protecting new places, providing, you know, new, really new recreational facilities, outdoor recreational facilities. And so the other point I'm making is just balancing a little bit of, of new with maintaining existing infrastructure, like a sprinkler system, is, is just a good thing because it feels to me more consistent with the purposes of the program that was created in nineteen sixty-five and nineteen sixty-seven or nine at the state level. So I'll stop there, but, you know, I, I just, I hope my colleagues could see value in at least having staff explore acquisition opportunities moving forward so that we could consider something like that if the need arose. And as I said, we've, we've heard about this at least twice during the course of the year from residents. Thank you.
I appreciate that. One of the things that we did a number of years ago is have an open space plan, where we did a whole community process about identifying areas where there might be an opportunity for protection or for park development. That's been, it's been quite some time, and it has not been updated. That may be something that we might, want to consider as, as part of a process, because I think it really is a good community discussion. And we do have a lot of new folks in the community that, that may be interested in the subject. One of the things that, I think the last time we added open space was the property that's now the Sligo Mill Overlook Park, and, and some of the areas there along, along Sligo Mill, Glengarry Park was some of the areas that were, that have been acquired. And it is kind of the nature of things, that if there's not a planning project, it tends to be, oh, somebody's going to develop something, so we need to hurry up and react. And I think that that, that has been, the most recent activity has been kind of in response to protecting some land that, that otherwise wasn't being considered. Certainly, the unprotected, or the more natural area of the Washington McLaughlin School site is something that was identified, I believe, in the open space study when it was done years ago. It may very well be an appropriate location for acquisition. And, and developing or looking at gateway parks or some other kinds of things is something, is a good community discussion. I appreciate you bringing it up. It, I think it's just going to need to be something that's worked into our program and, and be part of something of a regular city activity, and I think it's a good idea.
If, if you could provide a copy of that open space plan, that'd be great.
Sure. It's all, but I'm happy to do that.
That's all right. I'm just, I'd be curious to see it. And then, to the extent that my colleagues went away on this issue, I'm curious to hear others' opinions. Thank you.
And Ms. Ludlow, can you just speak to, a little bit to also, in addition to that open space plan, how that or other park, potential park designations fits into the, to the master planning process?
Yes. You know, the most basic land use plan for the city is the, is the city's master plan, and that was last updated in 2000. And the open space plan recommendations did fold into that. The open space plan, I mean, the master plan is something that is looked at both by the county and by the state when we put forward applications for this. So I think one of the things that we would need to do is identify these various locations, see how they're categorized in the master plan, and if there's something that we want to propose through park and planning as a way to, to make an amendment or, or some adjustment in the future for those.
And I'll also note that some of the more recent park acquisition projects tended to be larger and require more money than we had in program open space monies, and it tended to be a partnership with the county through park and planning, and they acquired and we contributed.
That's true. The other, the other just aspect of using program open space funds or any of the other state park funds is that when it's done, the land has to remain parkland in perpetuity. So it does, you know, there's some times when you can make something just kind of be used as a park but not declare it parkland. But once it is declared parkland, it isn't something we can change our mind on and, and go back and allow something to be built that would have some other kind of development on that site.
And I think another POS acquisition was the Sigler Gardens.
It was.
Okay. Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Start with, thanks for the preparation of the project open space materials. I like the resolution. That's all good. To pick up on the discussion, yes, I would endorse Councilmember Mayo's proposal that we look at potential land acquisitions for use of future project open space money, program open space money. We did discuss just now the Washington McLaughlin Christian School property. I do wonder if there could be an evaluation as part of looking at that property of the actual financial feasibility of any kind of development going on, on the wooded part of that parcel. I assume there would be a subdivision required if there were any residential development there, given it's residentially zone. It may simply be financially infeasible, in which case, why spend any money to acquire the property if nothing's going to happen to it anyway? We also have discussed in the past, some months ago, that they owe us money for taxes. An acquisition by the city would remove that property from the tax rolls. On the other hand, they're not paying us their taxes anyway. But that was something that the city staff was going to look into, the possibilities for recovery of the money owed, they owe money to the county as well in back property taxes. Okay, moving on. Yes, I appreciate that no decisions have been made regarding the dog park. I don't want to beat too much on the dead horse, just a little bit, that the language in the cover note was suggestive that, that we had definite directions. A next step is to clear out the undergrowth and determine if the site, meaning the Hefner site. So it does say a next step, not the next step. It would be quite interesting whether or not the full extent of that site were to be considered for a dog park, to have that cleared out a bit, because I know people walk their dogs or would like to just use those areas and they're not usable right now. I just do want to point out, I, I'm going to hold up my computer here. My interpretation from the Tacoma Dogs presentation, I got it, is that the triangle here is part of the area, this is the Tacoma Dogs presentation, the triangle is county land, and it's the square here where the dog is standing, if you can see that, that is actually the, the Hefner Park area. So yeah, there's a, there's a portion, maybe a third of the overall site that is the Hefner, which was the source of my confusion there, that it seemed like we were certainly not talking about exactly the same thing. I did have five questions that I relayed to the city manager earlier today and that we discussed. I understand that the response is going to be, we'll look into these things, which is perfectly fine with me. I do want to just quickly state those questions based on, oops, I closed the email, based on the stuff that was in the cover. Those were given, the, the cover says that the Maple Avenue Sligo Creek Parkway site is in a flood zone and does not meet county requirements for a dog park. I like detail on that. And then also, the Tacoma Piney Branch Park site overlooking Ed Wilhelm Field is under treason, does not meet county safety requirements. More precise information on what requirements are not met, whether those requirements would apply on county land if it were a city-operated dog park, it's possible they wouldn't, whether there's some procedure for waiving those requirements. I, I find them a bit puzzling in another way. The site overlooking Ed Wilhelm Field is under treason, does not meet county safety requirements. Well, there's no fence around that site right now, and people, kids, adults are going through that site. If it's not safe for adults with dogs or teenagers with dogs, why is it safe right now? So, you know, it's a bit puzzling, you don't have, you can't answer right now. Let me just see if I got everything. Yeah. And, and I, I am interested in having, as is everyone, an evaluation of the sites, a staff assessment of the sites when you're ready to provide it. That's it. Oh, right. The other thing was, it alarmed some of my constituents when they saw this estimates range from forty to four hundred thousand dollars. I don't know too many people around here who would endorse a four hundred thousand dollar dog park. So that was a bit alarming. And so it would be good to have an understanding of what the options are, and, yeah, that's it.
We're very happy to bring back that information.
Yeah, at the appropriate time, I understand. I wanted to get these things out right now, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. One, if we put the dog park proposal in the open space program, how does that impact any other grants that the city may want to apply for?
It, it makes no difference whatsoever. We can, if, if we want to, if we have money from other sources for any of these projects, we can apply them to those projects. If we, I mean, this is simply saying that these are things that the council thinks have merit as part of our annual program. Doesn't mean that they have to receive program open space funds. It doesn't exclude us from pursuing other things and, and not acting on some of these. And in fact, we've, in the past, had some items that then never did go forward because either the feasibility studies showed that it wasn't appropriate. Gymnasium on this building, for example, or, you know, or something we've pushed off because the timing was just not appropriate. So it's, it's, allows us to go forward, but it does not bind us to anything.
Okay. I would like to say that I support Councilmember Mayo's proposal, but I would like to know if we are going to take some properties out of, you know, tax, the tax base, how will that impact the city's tax revenues going forward?
Well, that's, that's what's done on a case-by-case basis, is each proposal comes forward. We provide that information and the estimates of that.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I'd like to go on record as supporting Councilmember Mayo's proposal. Basically, it's probably time to update the open space plan. And I think that what you said is completely right. The mere act of plant, doing that kind of planning will bring some discipline and focus to the issues of what parcels or pieces of parcels need to be acquired or added to the inventory of open space, whether it's stuff that we end up actually holding in, in our name, or whether it's held in-
We try to get other people to pay for it.
The Parks and Planning Commission.
Excuse me, I-
Right. No, I understand. That's, the, the idea is to get other people to pay for it. Because if you don't, if it isn't ready, and, you know, leaders within the community, I don't think people are going to, are just not going to focus on it. But just, in my own mind, I can think of a couple of projects in Ward Six that would make a lot of sense, and probably could be, but, you know, I won't even go further than that. And also, with regard to what Councilmember Grimes was just saying, the, the information on this blue sheet we have right now, with regard to the dog parks is, by necessity, cursory. I'd like to get better background on, for example, why a dog park in a flood plain is not a good thing. It would seem to me contrary, be opposite of that, is that if you want to have a dog park, you can't put too much else in a flood plain. I mean, are we worried about dogs getting washed away in floods? I mean, I'm being silly about this whole thing, and it just doesn't make sense to me. So there's probably more to it than I've been able to see so far. And last, I would just add that Howard Cone had mentioned a possible space up adjacent to Piney Branch Middle School, the, up where the Folk Festival was, the, the so-called grassy, the grassy nook stage, which was very much a nook, but not, certainly not grassy, it was mostly dirt, adjacent to the tennis courts. And I realize that that's within shouting distance of this other space that's in here, this Hefner Park space. But that looked like a viable site that could be contemplated. And if, if it's not, I'd like to know why, that it can't be considered. And if it can be, then let's put it into the, into the mix.
Thank you.
And one quick thing I just want to add, as there has been talk about the open space plan and various ways to preserve land, I recall that we had a discussion some years back about the ability of people to put covenants on their land, which will preserve them as well with, with kind of, it provides a little bit of a different mix on the tax structure as well.
That's right. We do have open space easements, and these can be done, they don't have to be a full property, they can be a portion of, of some of these property. There is a process to go for, go forward with that. It comes to the council for approval because it means that you get less tax revenue for that, for that property. Nevertheless, we have a number of environmental conservations on properties in Tacoma Park, and that is a, that is a useful tool.
So it's, it's a potential tool for some properties where it doesn't force us to acquire.
That's correct.
And it has the same effect going forward as program open space money where it's in perpetuity.
That's correct. But it really is at the, it's usually at the request of the property owner.
Right.
They, they like their property, they don't want it developed, and they know it has some environmental merit. And so they pledge that they will never develop that portion of their property, and at the same time, they get a slightly less, a slightly lower tax rate because they've got a portion of their property that's not developable.
Right. And that carries to the next owners as well.
It's, yes.
Okay. Thanks. Councilmember Mayo.
Just on that, now, you know, one, if, if the development of the covenant, the legal, you know, document is itself an impediment, were city staff, were the city attorney able to provide assistance with that? It may be something that would facilitate more voluntary participation of landowners into that process, or even providing a model covenant?
We, we have a model covenant for that. And, and it's based on a state program, so it's, it's pretty easy to use, and it has had a lot of legal scrutiny.
Is that something you could make available to council or publicly?
Sure.
Great. I, I don't, I wanted to ask sort of three questions. The first is whether city staff's comment on, and then, and my colleagues' interest in amending the whereas to add a fifth project, is how they're described, which would be the project, the way I would describe it, based on what we just said, was 2000 master plan identified open space protection or open space acquisition. So in other words, if there were properties identified in the 2000 master plan or the open space plan, this would identify property acquisition as one of five, now five uses. That's the first idea. The second is that if we're not going to do that, whether simply adding a whereas, which is whereas the city is developing, is revising its open space plan, you know, semicolon and, that just sort of commits the city to do, to take action based on this discussion. And then the- And then the third is with or without either of those two changes, whether at some point we could just have a work session about open space, parks, and, and other issues. That's an issue for the mayor to bring up, but I think it would be valuable to talk about these issues and have more time to do so. Thank you.
And I think number three is already on my list.
I do think, trying to remember from the 2000 Master Plan, I don't believe there are any properties that are identified for acquisition, as recommended for acquisition, that haven't been acquired at this point. But it's certainly worthwhile for us to look at that. I don't know that it would, I don't know that it raises to a project level for this purpose, but, because I don't think there's much that's there at this point.
And in relation to the whereas suggestion? Whereas the city is in the process of revising its open space plan, which has not been updated since 2000X?
Since nineteen...
Sorry. I would think that would make for a better, therefore be it resolved...
Yeah, I think it's a further resolved clause.
You know, that the city will, I would be, when this is moved, and by the way, there's a typo in the third whereas, it reads to instead of not. When this is moved, it could be moved with an additional, therefore be it resolved, that the city of Tacoma Park shall, do you want to fill in the language there?
Shall update its 2000X open space plan, or whatever the document is called.
It's current open space plan.
It's current open space plan.
To pursue...
To identify future opportunities.
For acquisition of parkland.
Yes.
Opposite, for, you might even add, and recreational opportunities to that.
So, why don't you move this resolution with that additional language?
I move this resolution with that additional language.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there additional discussion? Is there any public comment?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers Joe Edgell, Tacoma Dogs, I am encouraged by the comments that the city manager and deputy city manager made tonight to sort of correct the record. I am concerned, however, that the printed record, which is what will be there for posterity sake, has some inaccuracies, and I wanted to address those. One of the things I'd request maybe is the city staff withdraw that and maybe submit a different version to the city council, the staff recommendations. But specifically, the issue with the document, sorry, I need to pull it up here. The document notes what the city staff is asserting are negative aspects of some of these locations, doesn't note any positive aspects whatsoever. That's a significant oversight and presents what we feel is a predisposition on some of these issues. While the city manager said that they haven't pre-decided this issue, the text of the document seems to indicate something otherwise. So, we also disagree with some of the conclusions. Now, from discussions I had with deputy city manager, it sounds as if some of these representations that county staff made to the city staff and are then just recited, but again, that's not how it's written. It, for example, says, "The Maple Avenue Sligo Creek Parkway site is in a flood zone and does not meet county requirements for dog park." It's stated as a fact. It's not stated as an assertion of county staff that hasn't been, has or has not been verified by city staff. What we really would like is the city staff to work more with Tacoma Dogs, to, I think we have the same goal, right? The city council all said, "We want a dog park in Tacoma Park." And I feel like we're working cross purposes. I think it's important to note that we received no notification that this was even on the agenda tonight, thanks to Councilmember Grimes for posting it to the city list, because that's how we found out about it. So, what we would...
To be clear, that's not an official list, that's a community list.
Yeah, exactly. So, we would ask the city council maybe to encourage the city staff to work more closely with us, so we're working as a team to advance these issues, and to make sure that additional information which is brought forth and representing efforts on the dog park to the city council is accurate. And if we don't agree, that, that's fine, but at least have an opportunity to take a look at some of those things so that we can be prepared to provide you all a different view. The last thing I'd like to mention is, well, two things really. One, I wanted to address Councilmember Schultz's concerns. Howard and I talked to, about that site that you mentioned up by the city. It's, it's a school property, and what we found is that one of the challenges for the, what we call the parking lot site, the Hefner Park site is part of, it's also county property. So, what we noted in an email to the council members is that it's no longer a favorite site by Tacoma Dogs because of the difficult property issues. There's now three property owners, the city, the county, and the school district, which would have to negotiate some sort of agreement to locate a dog park there.
You're just, you're just saying that it's a complicated ownership problem, probably more complicated than we, there may be easier solutions elsewhere in the city.
If we could work it out, that would be great.
Oh, okay.
But, you know...
I see.
We've, and Howard, who's, his wife, I think, has been on the school board before, I think, understands that there would be some unique challenges to that site, and that was what the conversation I had with him were. Go ahead.
It's easy to believe that.
The, the Hefner Park site itself, which is farther down, is a sloped and very terraced, it'll have to be terraced, and, and we're concerned it would significantly drive up the cost of the dog park, which is something we wanted to avoid. And that's why we suggested the site farther down in Tacoma Piney Branch Park, which is flat. It also has trees, which I think is notable, that the county's own requirements, and I'm reading right from the county side, program requirements for dog parks are seating and shade. And last time I checked, the only way to have shade was to actually have trees, which apparently are a safety hazard to, I'm not sure I understand that. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention is, you know, Councilmember Mail mentioned a couple of other sites for acquisition. We'd be perfectly happy with a dog park at the corner of Jackson and Ethan Allen. I think that would be a great location if the city wanted to acquire that as well. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Nicole Olbaf. I live at 810 Maple Avenue. I'd just like to echo the comments of Joe Edgell on behalf of Tacoma Dogs. I think that I've learned a lot being here this evening and speaking with city staff about the contents of this document, the purpose of the document, the attachments to the document, that kind of thing. When you've got a group like Tacoma Dogs that's really trying to work through the system and work with their city council and that kind of thing to get something that at least we believe is of benefit to a larger constituency in the city, it would be, I think, extremely helpful prior to the publication and prior to the setting of agendas for meeting like this, to help educate us along the way as to what the purpose of this document actually was, which was to lay a marker for the open space project for FY14, initial spending, that kind of thing. I get it now. I didn't get it when I got this document and saw it online after the fact, had to change plans to come to this meeting, didn't know it was happening. Those are the kinds of things I think we want to avoid in the future. We do want to work with the city staff and the council members hand in hand. If we have disagreements, we have disagreements. But we need to be part of the process. It needs to be a little more transparent. Now, I understand what this document is, what it's not, I do take issue with its contents, but I understand the process better, and I appreciate the pains that have been taken to explain that to me here tonight. But when it comes to budget matters, please recognize, when it comes to liability issues, some of the things referenced in this document indirectly and directly, those are sensitivities, not only to the city, but to your constituents. And when we've put our hearts and souls into something, those are the kinds of sensitivities we can trip on ourselves over if we're not careful. There are implications for liability in here, there are implications for budget. Please just be aware that we'd like to work through those issues with you and not see them on the printed page in ways that make us feel like we have to attend the city council meeting tonight to set the record straight, when really, you guys are just trying to be helpful and think forward in the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, for his excellent presentation. And, and Mr. Grimes, I like your humor, and Mr. Schultz about the dogs being washed away in a floodplain. That just made me laugh. I like satire, I like that, that kind of humor. I just, I've lived in Tacoma Park for 29 years, and I have two big dogs, and, and I like the environment, and I try to be environmentally friendly. I have, one of my big dogs likes squirrels, actually. She caught one within her paws about a month ago and just let it go. And she, you know, so I don't think, I don't know, they might go after the frogs or the amphibians, though, that Tim mentioned. I can't say they'd be safe against them. But I'm just really asking you, I just, just a suggestion, there's, there's so many speed hunts at Tacoma Park, and it seems to me, I haven't been everywhere since Tacoma Park, but the most places I've been to, it's more wealthier areas, the more are the speed hunts. And like, down here in Tacoma Park, I mean, Tacoma Park, Maple Avenue, there aren't any where the apparent, the, so probably lesser, well-heeled people live in the apartment buildings. So, why, I just don't like that. Why are there so many speed hunts? You have to be, the more wealthy you are and the more power you have, you get the speed hunts. And, and I think there are too many in my street, in Boyd Avenue, so I think it's fine to have it in front of kiddie parks and where elderly people live, like the Franklin Apartments here and things like that. There should be a speed hunt there, and I don't think there is. But why have them just because some neighbors don't want people traveling through their, past their house? So, then, you know what's gonna happen? They're just gonna travel to the, go to the street parallel to theirs and go harass them, and then they'll ask for speed hunts. It's gonna be never end, it could be never-ending. So, please, look, could you use some of that money maybe for speed hunts for the dog park, maybe? Thank you.
Thank you. And can you give us your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Jane Mutchui, M-U-C-H-U-I.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Muehlbacher, Elm Avenue in Tacoma Park. I'm a dog park supporter as well, and I just wanted to mention that the tree issue with our number one preferred site puzzles me as well, why trees are supposed to be a, a safety hazard. As a veterinarian, I do see a lot of heat-related issues in the summer, and a lot of them occur when dogs play in the heat, obviously, and not having access to any shade to cool down. And, so shade is definitely a prerequisite for any dog park to have, and the big trees that are already existent there would be perfect for providing any shade. I have to mention that at Hurick Dog Park in Hyattsville, I don't know if anybody of you has been there, they recently added trees, they added small trees, they planted trees for added shade, which of course will take several years to get to an adequate size to provide any shade, but they are located in the park, and they added trees into the park to provide shade. So, I'm not sure why trees are supposed to be a hazard for a dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Lovess.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovess, your official peace delegate. I want to tell you people, I like the idea of a dog park very much, because not only does it, is it healthier for the city and the dogs, but it's also good for the environment, you know, if we can have some more parks and stuff, you know, we could, we need to replace a lot of the greenery that we're losing. I think that'd be a great idea. And I think it'd be a great way for neighbors to meet each other and talk to each other. I think that's a great idea. Also, it'll be much easier for the person to clean up, clean up a turd after the dog is done. And, because otherwise, they're gonna have to maybe walk a distance to throw it away in the city. And I think that's why a lot of people just walk off and leave it, because it's too much of a difficulty. You know, like, they'd have to pick it up on one end of the street and carry it all the way to the other end and around the corner to, to dispose of the turd. And if they do have to do that, definitely, a lot of people aren't gonna bother with it. At the dog park, I heard they're gonna have our trash, you know, disposal sites along the way, and that saves our city and saves a lot of people from having to deal with it. And it really, really smells, and also, people can slip in it and get some very, very serious injuries. And I'd like to thank the city very much for the idea of that, and I'd love to see a dog park. That's a great thing for the city. Children would be able to meet each other down there, meet new friends and stuff, and the parents would be able to meet the other parents and stuff and get ideas from them. And so, it's not just good for the dogs, it's good for the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, I'm Roger Schlegel, 6512 Allegheny Avenue. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Pinecrest Association, which is a community in the southernmost corner of Tacoma Park. First, I want to say that I really like the idea of a dog park, and I'm just thrilled by the tremendous efforts that Tacoma Dogs Group has put together. I would throw in a plug for that location that I'd call the Meadow, that we were discussing a little earlier, that has the three different owners. It's a really neat spot if you walk up in there, and it actually is a nice place for stargazing at night. If it becomes more accessible, people might notice that more. It's the area down the hill behind the middle school. But the main reason I'm here tonight is just to remind you that Pinecrest is waiting patiently for this Sligo Mill Overlook Tot Park Tot Lot. And I want to thank Councilmember Daniels-Cullen for championing this a year ago, and I want to thank Ms. Ludlow for all of the work she's done on preliminary conversations with the residents and with the SMO Community Garden plot holders. It's a really important project, and we've been waiting very patiently for it. It is a new recreational use, and Councilmember Mail, you were speaking about how that's the original intent of the legislation. And it is also a use that was in the 2000 Master Plan and is still unfulfilled. When the community garden pilot project was located there, my understanding from a former council member is that that happened with a very short timeline of discussion, maybe just a few weeks before it was all agreed to. And, you know, I'm a plot holder, so I think it's a great facility, but it's important to remember that it, it did supersede a planned use, which was playground for that space. And so, it's very important that the city keep its eye on the ball, so to speak, with the playground concept for that site. And I know that, as Councilmember Grimes pointed out in that, the third whereas, it says that these projects are not binding. I, I do feel that the perception is created when you place it into the plan, that the city is relatively committed to making something happen there. So, to put it simply, we have residents in our neighborhood and as well in the Colby-Cherry Avenue area who have waited into a second year for the design to start on these projects. And at this point, we, we're looking into another year to move into construction. So, we're concerned that, we would like to see a commitment from the city in terms of how the queuing works for these projects. In other words, we were hoping to be in the construction phase for this project, and I'm sure the Cherry Avenue folks, Cherry Colby folks, same thing. So, what kind of guarantee or commitment can the city make that we won't continue to be moving alongside of other worthy ideas that come up? It's just a question of fairness and focus and a follow-through. When we have lots of great ideas in town, I would like to see the city complete the ones that it sets its mind to before moving on to the next ones.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you could maybe address that question about how the queuing for these projects works, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. The, the plan is to have a design consultant design both parks, both Colby Avenue and Sligo Mill Overlook Park, and to get a proposal out relatively soon, and that will come back to the council. and that will come back to the council. The commitment to moving forward on that is in our budget. It's in our budget for this year for the planning, and it's in our CIP budget for next, for FY15, for construction of the two parks. So we are on the record as committed to moving forward with those, with those.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, so what we have is a resolution on the floor. It has the additional language that Councilmember Mail proposed, and it has the change in the third whereas, so that it reads the annual program, does not bind the city. Any other council comments on this before we vote on it? Okay, this is a resolution, so it can take a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We'll now move to...
May I make a remark to Mr. Edgell, that you expressed a concern about the cover notes here. The minutes from this resolution, I'm sorry, the minutes from this meeting, as well as the recording are public records that essentially correct the cover notes.
I agree. Item number four is a frustrating ordinance adopting a wage adjustment for police officers represented by local 400. Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Seaman, seconded by Councilmember Daniels Cohen. Are there any council questions or comments on this? This implements the wage adjustments according to the way we usually do them. And in the years when there is not a study and kind of reevaluation of everything, the increase by the Wage and Salary Employment Cost Index for state and local government, and this is for the police union, local 400. Is there any public comment on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It carries unanimously. Next item is a frustrating ordinance adopting a wage adjustment for employees represented by AFSMI, and this is the other union that is, that represents city employees. Would somebody like to move this one?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Is there any council comment on this one? Any public comment on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. And the last regular item on the agenda is item seven, which is a frustrating ordinance providing for the 2013 city elections. There are some aspects of it that we have to deal with at this meeting. I know the clerk is ready to deal with that, so why don't we move the ordinance? Would somebody like to move it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Mail. Would the clerk like to tell us anything we need to do and know and take care of business?
Sure. So this is the standard election ordinance that you adopt every two years before an election. One of the things that is decided in this ordinance is the, the order of ward nominations at the nominating caucus. And so if, if I can, I'd like to ask the city manager to just, I put the six wards in here and folded them up and just asked the city manager to pull those and read off the, and just read off the ward numbers, and then we'll have it for the record.
And so if, if there's any dissatisfaction, and whichever ward always seems to go last out of the draw gets it again, they can blame the city manager.
Or terminate me.
And, and we need these numbers as part of this ordinance so that we can do this.
Just read off the number.
Six.
So word six is first.
Yay! Put this one, ESPN. Two.
Two?
Is it word four that's always on?
I know it.
All these enthusiastic people you're trying to get out, they're going to have to wait. And three.
Okay, so Section 1, Item B of the ordinance, is nominations of candidates for city council are taken in order Ward 6, 2, 1, 5, 4, 3. Any council comments on this ordinance?
I'd like to point out a few other things quickly.
Oh, oh, sorry.
If I can, I'll be quick. So this states that the polling place will be here at the Tacoma Park Community Center. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. as always. This also sets forth the hours for early voting, the hours and days for early voting. So that would be Wednesday, it would start, it would run from Wednesday, October 30th through Sunday, November 3. And on the weekends, the early voting would be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and on the weekdays, it would be from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, and that would also be here at the community center, but we wanted to schedule plenty of time for early voting. Of course, we'll have the same-day voter registration, so anyone who is not registered in advance of the election can come here and provide certain documentation and register, and then vote on Election Day. And I think that's essentially it. Are there any questions about any of this?
There's also absentee voting.
And of course absentee voting for anyone who, it's essentially voting by mail for anyone who would prefer to do that. So there's plenty of opportunity to cast a ballot.
Any questions by the council? Any comments by the public?
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. I'm looking in particular on the last page, Section 12, where it says the election judges shall ensure correct counting of votes on ballots on which the proper number of votes has been indicated. That might be read as meaning that if there's a ballot with an overvote in one race, the entire ballot is not counted. I don't have the city charter with me, and I don't know whether that's what the city charter calls for, but if not, that language may need to be changed to something like correct counting of votes on ballots in races for which the proper number of votes have been indicated. In any event, it's probably useful to ensure that the contractor's software handles overvote ballots correctly.
Yes, the Board of Elections has, is working with the contractor to ensure that the ballots that would be bounced back to the voter for review would be those where they chose the same candidate, selected two candidates as their first choice. So that would be, that would make that vote invalid. But the Board of Elections is working with them. And I'll, I'll review this language to make sure it didn't mean anything that wasn't intended in this paragraph.
Okay. And, and if there needs to be a correction, you'll bring that to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
There'll be a second reading. I would just comment that it would, it might just satisfy the purpose if it simply said correct counting of votes on ballots, because that implies you're doing it correctly.
Could I suggest that the city clerk evaluate the question and make changes, appropriate changes for a second reading?
Yes. I think that's appropriate.
Does this mean in the future, Councilmember Grimes, that you won't be suggesting corrections to other agendas?
I'm just, I'm just...
My comments are...
It's two reading, good. I mean ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Mr. Lovelace?
Yes, my name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I got one question to you. I understand that people, if they land in the hospital right, right before they vote and they can't get to the polls, I understand that they can have somebody bring in a provisional ballot for them, an emergency ballot, so that they can still take part and get their ballot out. Because I couldn't stand the thought of landing in the hospital and not being able to vote, you know? So I, I wouldn't have to wait until after I voted to get something looked at, because I, I just can't stand the right to lose my right to vote, no matter what the reason is. I also want to find out if people who get their ballots in late like that, if they're in the hospital, would they be able to have their ballot counted? I hope so. And I understand that convicted felons in Tacoma Park can now vote. And I want everyone out there who's ever been in prison or ever been in jail, now that they're out, I want them to know that they, I understand, can vote. And that's a very important right. Once their punishment is over, they should be able to live like their punishment is over, like the rest of us. They should be part of reentering society, is registering to vote and then voting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll get clarification on the provisional and other questions for second reading.
Yeah, I can just say, yes, there is a, absolutely, there is provision for emergency absentee ballots. We have a process for an agent to pick up and deliver and return an absentee ballot. But it does have to be here by the time the polls close. That is, there is no late ballot accepted. It has to be here by the time the polls close, but...
I know that, that's why I asked that.
Yeah, yeah, but there is certainly opportunity to receive a ballot on Election Day in an emergency.
Yeah, thank you very much. Everybody should know that...
Okay. Any additional public comment?
Hi, I'm Roger Schlegel, again. Just two things that have been on my mind about the elections that I think would be good to clarify, so there aren't any misunderstandings. One is that since the absentee voting has become possible in the last few years and is now more popular, I think it would be good to clarify whether a candidate can distribute absentee ballots in person or assist people in beginning to fill those out. Because I did see that in the election four years ago, I saw that happening. And it was someone trying to be helpful, but I think that it, it would look untoward for that to be happening. So I think a policy should be clarified on that. And in a related matter, now that there is same-day registration, I know it's been the practice sometimes for candidates to be helpful and offer people rides to the polling places. And I'd be concerned that there could be an appearance that, if it's not clarified, it could be an appearance that someone was trying to rustle up last-minute votes by giving people rides, and it might call the results into question if it were a close race. So I think that needs to be clarified, as well as whether candidates may give rides to people, because someone might interpret that as compensating the voters because it was saving them money on the bus or something like that. I'm not trying to raise red flags, but I'm just trying to foresee possible concerns ahead of time. So, thank you.
I believe that has, at least the rides, has been discussed before at the state level. And it's been found that it's okay, although you cannot pass out literature when you're transporting, you can't pass out literature for just one candidate. You have to do it for everybody if you, if you pass literature at all.
And there was an earlier part of that question.
Right, the absentee voting. So I would hope that there would be no candidate who would be assisting a voter in filling out an absentee ballot. Absentee ballot applications can be distributed, I mean, they're available freely, so anyone can print it, distribute it, do whatever they want with it. But I'll ask the Board of Elections to, to give this some thought as well, to see if there needs to be, if, if they have any recommendation, but...
And please check on the other two, the transportation also.
On the transportation?
Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing in our code that addresses it, certainly.
And just to clarify, so that, so if someone requests an absentee ballot, so there's an absentee ballot request form, then the city would send them the absentee ballot? Is that where they could, I suppose, come pick it up?
Right, if I have a signed, right, I just need a signed application for an absentee ballot and need to ensure that they are a registered voter at that point.
But they, but they do have to identify an agent and...
Oh, if someone is picking up in, in the event of an emergency absentee ballot, yes. There's a, we have a special form that is a request for absentee ballot by agent. So it is possible to have an agent pick up and deliver an absentee ballot in the event of an emergency. I mean, it is always subject to...
Challenge.
Challenge, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments? Any other council discussion? This is a frustrating ordinance. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, our final agenda item this evening is a vote to convening closed session. We're going to be briefed on a personnel matter. Meeting is closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland State Government, Article, Section 10-508A1, two, two little i's. Following this closed session, we will adjourn for the evening. Would somebody like to move the closed session?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Grimes, seconded by who?
Me.
Councilmember Schultz.
Only because the Redskins are losing, so...
Will all those in favor of the closed session, please raise a hand. Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor, so we will now adjourn to closed session. Council will stand in session. Roll call, please. I'm not here asking you to stop growth.
A member of my family was killed with a gun. It can happen, and it does, and it was an accident.
I'm for you to vote against these fairs.
I implore you to vote against these fares and cutting services.
Aye, passes five to two.
A lot can happen in a day. We'll make sure you don't miss a thing.